Hello people. Hello people. It's been awhile. Here I am. It's been awhile. It's been about a month. I've been busy, you know. A lot of stuff here, there, everywhere. I'm doing some work stuff. I took a vacation for a week. I... Hello Mountain Trash Panda. Hello hello hello. Rack attack. I have been working on stuff on my own. I've got some ideas. I've got another project idea. Well, basically a conversion from, you know, one project to another, but I didn't want to kick off a new project tonight because we've already got a lot in the works and I've got a lot of things I want to do. Some things I'm kind of waiting on, some things are, you know, a little more urgent, a little less urgent, whatever. So tonight I want to do something a little bit different. Uh, I've been learning TypeScript from this book, which was suggested by your boy TrashDev. So my work repo has TypeScript in it, but it's not great and I'm trying to make it better. And I've been reading this book to try to learn about how I can do that. I already know the basics of TypeScript, you know, like the basic types and how do you add some types and stuff. I'm looking for the more specialty things, like how do I fully enforce these types in fancy ways and such. So that's what I was hoping this book would help me for, but as I'm reading the book, um, I'm kind of looking at how I study a new language or technology or whatever through the books. I don't always buy books. But TypeScript, I think, is a big enough challenge for me that I want, like the next level. I wanted to kind of just get a book. Um, sometimes I go with books. Sometimes I go with videos online. Sometimes I go with online courses like Frontend Master. Frontend Master has a TypeScript course, maybe two of them. I did one of them originally to learn kind of the basic types. Uh, and I haven't gone through the full course yet. I find a lot of people with TypeScript, they go from basic TypeScript stuff to like, okay, here's how you make a fancy ass generic. And a fancy ass generic can do what you want and it's just confusing. So I'm still learning TypeScript. I'm in the mid-level. So I wanted to review this book. Write some of my notes, add it to my study book app, which y'all haven't seen yet. So that's a new app that I, it's, it's actually an app that I built a long time ago, but I've used it every once in awhile when I'm studying new technologies and new, new things. Um, I'll show that to you. But we're gonna cover, I haven't gone through this whole book yet. I've only gone through maybe where am I from here? I'm about halfway through it now, actually. I'm in chapter three on item 27. They give you 62 tips in this book. And I'm on 27? Is that what I said? Probably. BLT.gg. Thank you for the follow. And while I was gone, so I was going for a month, about halfway through that. Raz subscribed and they didn't, you know, and they didn't get to see that on screen and I wanna, on streaming, I wanna thank you for the sub. Raz23. It's a prime sub. I appreciate that. And also thank you for the follow. Who, who was that? Hold on. Let me find my windows here. Uh, BLTDog. Dot. Sorry. Dot GG. Yeah. Thanks for the follow. Last stream, we added the chat on screen. So if you're here, you can say hi and see your chats on screen. If you're a troll, you can say hi. And I can ban you. You know, I don't ban you for saying hi, but whatever. So a part of this book, the goal here is for me to learn something, of course. But I'm, want to write assessments for books. Um, an assessment would be like, here's a list of all these questions. Can you answer all these? And a lot of them I took directly from this book, you know, from things you learn in this book. But some of them troll equals false. BLT dot is real. Some of them are just general questions that I came up with when I'm working on things like what's a generic in TypeScript? They, they don't exactly describe that in this book, but they do talk about building generics. So they expect you to kind of have that information ahead of time. Um, so this book is not totally beginner. Um, they do expect you to know TypeScript a little bit, but Cypher. Thank you for the sub. Welcome back. Look at that founder badge. I still have founder badges. 11 months subscriber? Is that true, Cypher? How come I didn't get a resub on, or a resub notification on that? Um, channel subscription message should have shown up. Oh man, I am sorry. 11 months? Really? You've been subscribing for 11 months? Wow, man. Thanks. I appreciate that. I thought I was down to one subscriber and I thought it was, um, CM Griffin. Let me try to replay this and see. Yeah, it didn't, uh, it didn't play it. What's the deal there? Am I not listening for that event? Hold on. Let me check something. Let me check something. Right quick. I mean, I have to be listening for it because I, I got the message. Let me show you my screen. How about that? So it's coming through as yoink, channel subscription message. What did you yoink there? Yoink? Um, you know, when you don't stream for awhile, you get pretty rusty. Yoink. Sounds yoink. Uh, yeah, you could do sound yoink if you wanted to do that. That's a long one, but discombobulated. Is that the word I'm looking for? So let me look at, um, I have event commands. Channel subscription message right here. It should be playing it. Cause it still played the other sounds. Um, is that the correct spelling of yoink? Platinum. Consecutive or just new ones? It should be listening on just this name. So the event actually comes through as channel subscription message is the event type. Event. Dot cumulonimbus. Oh, is it because there's no message? Message.txt. There was no Oh, and there was another sub from, uh, right now from, from Platinum. Hey, thank you, man. Thank you. Let me figure this out real quick. Let me reboot it and see. Channel subscription message. And then I'll try re, um, refreshing my OBS. I want to make sure you guys get your overlays. We're gonna lose chat. Coming in with the test class. There it is. Just subscribe with the message. It's an empty message. But thank you for the subscription, Platinum. And then let's get yours in there too. Ooh, this is buggy. There it is. 11 months. Only one more. I don't know what happened. I don't know why it broke. Sorry, y'all. Yo TrashDev, what's up butts? Thank you both for the sub. I appreciate that. Now back to my regular scheduled programming. Yo TrashDev, we're reviewing your book tonight. And if you want to go buy the book, you can see it on there. Wrong fucking window dude. I have it on here and I have an Amazon affiliate link. So go ahead and give me your Amazon affiliate link money if you want to buy it. Uh, maybe I'll have a hat tip to TrashDev. He's rich. I don't know if you know this, but he's rich. He acts like he's poor, but he's not. Is that a pillow? That's Trash's new icon. Have y'all seen it yet? His kid drew that. A happy face. There's a few different renditions of it. Yes, yes. But I have it here. I set up an Amazon affiliate account because I want to do more of these books review, book reviews. Um, that's what the books command is for. And I also made a wish list. If you want to buy me one to review. Um, I actually have different plans for the Amazon account, affiliate account. I don't plan to make money. No, I'm halfway through the book right now. I'm on chapter three, item number 27 of 62. So we've got, uh, some intro stuff to go through. We can test your knowledge, see if you remember any of it. But basically what we're gonna do, um, I gave you the book description. I mean, I pretty much did that already, right? Learn the nuts and bolts of TypeScript. I like it so far. It got pretty hard, pretty quick. I must say, there's been a couple of these rules so far that I'm like, what does that even mean? I'm gonna have to come back to that. Um, but I, I did actually, it fixed one of the problems that I was looking to solve in my codebase at work. The one that I commented about in, in your Discord. Was trying to find a solution for that. But yeah, there was one of the first ones that got really tricky where they're like, oh yeah, you just built this fucking generic and life's good. But those are crazy. Learn the nuts and bolts of TypeScript's type system, which is not really what they talk about. Owen Codes, thank you for the gifted sub to TrashDev boy. Um, I think there's still founder badges. Trash, did you get a founder badge? No, 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 you didn't. No, you didn't. That's cool. That's cool. Of course Trash wasn't subbed. He, he don't buy subs. He only gets gift subs. Poor, feed me, feed me. Um, design types to make your codes safer and more understandable. Use type inference to get full safety with a minimum of type annotations. That's kind of where I'm at right now. It, chapter three is the type inference. Um, and make tactical use of the any type. Understand how dependencies and type declaration files work in TypeScript. Um, I built my own template declaration file, which is cool. Successfully migrate your JavaScript codebase to TypeScript. So we'll get all the, to all of these things someday. This is by Dan Vanderkam, Principal Software Engineer at Sidewalk Labs. That might be out of date. He might not really work there anymore. Cypher got a founder badge? Um, I think you should have got one too, Platinum, because it's the first 10, isn't it? Or I only have five subscribers. And you're all here right now. I'm pretty sure. So besides Griffin, um, can you change it? Maybe you can change it in the little badge thing. I don't know. But thank you for all the subs and dubs. Uh, that's the book description. Let's get into some questions. Um, so study book. I haven't shown y'all this application. I built this a while ago. These are public, I'm calling them study books. That's like the name of the app. Did you draw that bird yourself? Bird? Oh, that bird? Hell no. Hell no. That's, uh, they're, you know. Did you, did y'all see the tweet of, um, someone posted a picture of one of the drawings, like a, of a pig and then it was exact same drawing. It was on a wine bottle. And they're like, I always thought these were custom drawn for the O'Reilly books, but they're not, I guess. They must be pulling it from stock somewhere or somebody double dipped because they're using that elsewhere. So study book is an app that I built a little while ago while I was working at the coding bootcamp. Something for students to study with. Nobody ever used it but me, but I like to use it when I go back. So I click into my dev book. You'll see I have topics and terms and questions. So topics are like kind of a high little category. I have all these topics that I've made. I use these to group a bunch of terms and questions into one. So if you want to study on something specific like TypeScript, you'll see I only have these related terms right now. And then I'm gonna add a bunch more questions. These are the only related ones right, I have right now. But from here, you can, um, click on a term, you know, that's linked. And then from there you can see all the related topics, related questions. It's kind of like a big graph of related information. I'd like to rebuild this app someday. It's pretty outdated. It's just on a basic like connects, Postgres and a React front end, um, because it was built simple enough to, for any of our students to understand it, using the technologies we use in the course. But now in the real world, I'd like to rebuild it with like GraphQL. I really need to do something with GraphQL and this is the perfect app for it. So all these related terms, getting these deeply nested data and requesting just the data that I want, you know, I'd only want related terms for this one. I don't want. So that'll be where I get someday. When you spend a bunch of hours on a coding project and you're the only one that uses it, I know the feeling. I, I'm okay with that. Actually, I have a lot of products that, that I use for myself. I build for myself and I use for myself. As long as I'm using it, I'm okay with it. Um, I don't a lot of the time I don't want to try to take it to market because I don't want to hold other people's data and be reliable for if the app goes down and someone else is trying to use it, like I don't want to be responsible for a lot of that, you know? At that point, I'd better be getting paid for that service to be able to handle that, but I don't want to be on all the time. So I'm using it. I'm cool with that. But, uh, we're gonna basically fill out a lot of these TypeScript topics today. So I want to fill out a lot of questions first. I got a lot that I wrote down. And, um, I don't know if I should go through the answers right away or should I fill out the questions and then come back to the answers? I don't really know. Add questions to study book. Okay. Question number one. Um, we have a few in here. So what are generics used for in TypeScript? What do you like or dislike about TypeScript? This is kind of like a phone or, you know, opinion thing, whatever. What is the difference between interfaces and types in TypeScript? That is a question that I wrote down in there somewhere. But so for example, you click on a question. The answer is hidden by default. I can show it if I do this, this little eye icon. Um, but I didn't actually fill it out. A lot of the times I put questions in and I don't fill the answers out. The idea is that you would fill it out yourself and, and you'd have that exercise of, um, filling out the information, but since I'm the only one who can edit this right now, I would edit that information and other people can use it to study it. So I don't fill out the answer if I don't know for sure. Generics are used for non-selected. That's right. Uh, there is no information about it, but eventually I'll tie it all in here. So if I wanted to add a new question, which I do, I can hit new, the little up plus icon, paste it in there. What are some runtime errors TypeScript would catch? Does anyone in the chat know? I did write down a few things for these. Most of these I didn't answer in my notes, but some of them I did. Um, in this case, uh, I wrote down two things. 404 resource not found? I don't think they'd catch that. It doesn't make any requests to the, um, or what's a 404? Um, what are some errors TypeScript would catch? So first of all, oh, runtime errors. So also I'm specifically noting runtime errors. So I said, um, spelling mistakes. Laughing way too hard at your own joke. Way too obvious. TypeScript could catch spelling mistakes on defined types. Meaning if you're not, if you're using any's, you know, you can't really detect it there. And also calling functions with wrong argument count. So if you have a function that you're calling with two different arguments and it only accepts one or you're missing one, it will be able to check that as well. I'll save that for now. The idea is I'll keep iterating on these and, um, you know, changing the answer and coming back and verifying. So now that I have the answer in there, I can show it and hide it. And this stays with, um, caching. So I usually turn it off. So then if I go to another question, it defaults to showing the answer hand and I can turn it on and off temporarily if I want to. But I do want to relate the topics to I can click this little icon and relate it to TypeScript. Save it. So now if I go to TypeScript, I gotta refresh. My caching is kind of messed up on here. And then there is the new one right here. What are some runtime errors TypeScript would catch? There it is. So now I can just kind of like, oh, I want to quiz myself on TypeScript. I can come here and just see the, all the related questions. And then ideally this API would be open. I wanted to use it to build, you know, kind of like a quizzing application for you somehow, but that's way down the line. Hey, we reached 100 questions in dev terms or dev book. This used to be called dev terms, um, dev book. I don't know if you noticed, but I also made a music when I was studying some music, trying to learn music for real for a little while. Um, I added a lot of terms. What kind of questions did I add? How many letters are in the musical alphabet? Does anyone know that? Trash, did you ever play an instrument growing up? Or anyone else? Um, I think the answer to that is, uh, A, B, C, D, E. Yeah. F, G. Six. Seven. A, B, C, D, E, F, G. Break. Busted. Uh, did you play any instruments Trash? I mean, I know how to play like from tabs on a guitar, you know, I mean, I want to learn piano for real, but I also want to learn just any kind of music for real. Played euphonium, tuba and little piano? What's little piano? I don't know what a euphonium is either. Oh, and a little That's funny. You mean you physically played a little piano? Is that different than a regular, like a, you know, like a grand, a baby grand, those kinds of pianos? You played a little one. It's a little bit of piano. I play the big piano, big boy piano. Okay, a new, next question. This one's pretty easy. Can JavaScript and TypeScript be used interchangeably? The answer? Hard no. Hard no. Just kidding. We don't have to say hard no. It, it is a little tricky in the wording. So, uh, use interchangeably. The answer is no because JavaScript, I mean, TypeScript doesn't like run code. It compiles to JavaScript and then runs. But you can't run a TypeScript file directly, I guess. Does that make sense? Um, I think they had a reference for this in the book. They called it like every TypeScript application is a JavaScript application, but not every JavaScript application is a TypeScript application. So let's, let's do that. Um, every TypeScript application is not a Java. And you can't, yeah, you can write straight up JS in a TS file. Um, not every TypeScript application, I know, every TypeScript application is not a JavaScript application, but every JavaScript application is a TypeScript application. TypeScript gets compiled down to JavaScript, which runs in the browser. It'd be cool if TypeScript can run in the browser directly. Someday. We'll get there. You know, someday when Microsoft rules the world. Okay, next question. What's the difference between JavaScript and TypeScript? In my notes, I didn't write the TypeScript properly. This is similar to the last one. So the difference is, uh, TypeScript includes typing information. Interfaces. So is TypeScript categorized as a framework? That's a good question. I should add that. I would say no. Uh, TypeScript is more of a language than anything. And it does actually have like some logic in it. It's an SDK. You would call it an SDK. Where is the line on that? Oh, you dabbled in JavaScript and that's about it. Okay. Yeah, besides HTML and CSS. Yeah, so TypeScript is, I mean, that's like your next level. That's when you want to build applications, then you'll get into TypeScript. But if you're just building JavaScript, little snippets, whatever, that's fine. But when you build an application and you have all these, this data structure and you need to know the types of everything, that's when it comes in. Um, TypeScript includes typing information, interfaces, like generics. I don't know how else I would say it. And more unavailable in JavaScript. Type. It's a language. That's a good question. Is TypeScript a language? Is JavaScript with syntax or types? Types is a strongly typed programming language that builds on JavaScript. Interesting, interesting. TypeScript, it doesn't improve, well, it does improve the workflow, but but its main goal is to add the feature of types to JavaScript. Um, because JavaScript does not include types. Are you familiar, Platinum, with strongly typed languages versus loosely typed languages? Um, that's what it's trying to solve. So JavaScript is a loosely typed language, meaning that it just kind of implies the different types in different places. In strongly typed languages, you need to specifically define what type of data each variable is and stuff. One was written in caps lock together. Yeah, just like other languages, it compiles down to other lower level things. So like C sharp would compile down to, I don't know what specifically machine code, what do they call that? And then eventually down to binary or whatever, but um, so it's, it's, I think it would be considered a language. Um, and it does have some programming aspects in the generics. You can do logic like if else kind of logic and stuff like that, so. Um, but when you're building applications, you have like these datas, you know, like, like in Google, this search result will have specific properties with it. It'll have a title and a URL and this kind of stuff. And I can create a type to say, this is what that object is going to look like. And so if I try to use anything outside of that object that's not available on it, TypeScript is going to warn me. JavaScript wouldn't do that normally and I would only be able to see that error once that code's running. TypeScript tries to catch things before it adds like compile time errors to JavaScript as well, which JavaScript does not normally have. Includes typing information, interface generics and more on interfaces. Compiled time error checking and more unavailable in JavaScript. TypeScript. And your IDE will bitch at you to keep within the bounds of using that particular type. Yes, yes. So um, you're not to Linters yet either, but Linters will do a similar kind of thing. They'll try to, they've tried to lint your code. Um, linting means like check your code for something specific like errors or um, naming conventions or whatever. There's a lot of different things you can do with it, but once you get to build applications and you're on teams with several different developers or maybe even 30 or 100, whatever, these things really start coming into play then because it enforces strictness that you need to help prevent bugs from cropping up and and regressions and regressions, which are basically bugs, et cetera. Where was I going with this one? What's the difference between JavaScript and TypeScript? TypeScript. What did they say? This is strongly typed programming language. Yeah, so for example, um, name, Cypher says, is type string. So anything else returned will not work. Yeah. So if you try to set name to a number, it's going to throw an error and say, hey, this is, we're not expecting this to be a number. Did you mean to do this? Um, whereas in a normal JavaScript app, it would just do it silently. And then if you tried to run string specific things on the number, it might break. So it protects that. I'm gonna leave it at this for now. We can come back and add more later. And let me add the related topic. To TypeScript. By the way, when you're studying things, it's good to have like repetitions. So for example, I didn't finish this answer here. I want to come back to it and reread it later. Well, I want to come back and try to answer it on my own and see, okay, how does my answer compare to what I previously said? Maybe I have new information. Maybe I have a better way to describe it. I'll refine it over time. I like to do that. Um, because each time I come back to it, I'm going to have more and more information and make it more concise in any way I can and uh, the problem is if someone else is reading this, they might think this is the definitive answer, but it's whatever. It's whatever. That's up to them. Okay, let's add your other question though. Is TypeScript categorized as a framework? This wasn't covered in the book, but this is a great question. What did we decide? We decided not exactly. We, I would more consider it a language since it has its own syntax and functionality. I'm Ron Burgundy? Yeah, Platinum, so he said you were trying to treat an asset tag number as a string instead of an integer. And I don't know if I did it right, but it works though. Yeah. So there's cases like that where it'll work totally fine, but if you have code that relies on that ID being a number and you try to do something uh, with that and it breaks, it can take down your whole app. So TypeScript helps prevent those blatantly open bugs. And like spelling mistakes honestly are such a huge amount of bugs when I'm developing things. Milk was a bad choice. Um, I would consider it more a language since it has its own syntax and functionality. I wonder if you can call it a an SDK. I don't think in the TypeScript SDK. Yeah, I wouldn't call it like an SDK, I don't think, but I mean, that could be possible. I wouldn't knock you for it. Next questions. How can you set TypeScript configuration options? There's a few ways to do it. I'm gonna take the easy one. First and most preferred is from what I hear is with TS dash, is it dash config or just TS config? Dot JSON maybe? Fuck man. I don't remember. TS config dot JSON is right or JS config. Interesting. Um, and I, and the book did mention this. It said this is the preferred way with TS JSON is because um, then anyone running a TS command that inherits this JSON. Let me see, since anyone running TypeScript commands using a TS config dot JSON will have standard, standardized options. Um, if you have a team working on a bunch of things, then you want them to all use the same TypeScript options because if it's different for one person, like if someone has their config set globally on their computer and it's missing and you format it one specific way and then someone else's formater doesn't have that config set, it's going to change it back and forth each time and it's going to just keep going back and forth like, I changed it to this, I changed it to this, change it to this. And it could be valid in both cases. So um, that's why it's preferred. An additional way is to set, is to pass it in with the TSC command flags. Um, and that was also not ideal unless you have, you know, a predefined set of a or a pre-written command like an MPM command that you can, everyone can run the same command and spit out the same command. But if you're writing your own, ideally, you're probably not writing your own TSC command. Usually it's, it's built into your build tools somehow. And Cypher says naming commissions are also big things, whether you're using camel case, kebab case or otherwise. Um, snake case is what they use within their current job for API calls and period start, start date as opposed to scope variables. Yeah. So naming commissions are a big one. Too. You can enforce those similar to a lenter would. You can do this directly in TypeScript. And thank you for the hydrate. I don't know why it didn't pop up. Like, what's the deal? Is the chat thing not working? Like, it's just kind of hiding out of nowhere? Hydrate level four, please. It should play the sound. Let me.
Hydrate level four, please.
There we go. That's what it should have, should have played. Okay, next question. I did the shortcut one. Yeah, I don't think it's a top level one. Why would you want to use a config file over a CLI flag? A TS config JSON over CLI flag. So this was in the book. I wouldn't normally ask someone this question, but uh, like I mentioned, TS config that JSON will be inherited by anyone running TypeScript commands within the project while each user can run their own config by passing CLI flags. Look at that. Markdown support. When is a good time to use any? Any in TypeScript, since these aren't like scoped specifically. The answer is never. No. There is an acceptable time to use it. The people say never. Um, you can enable, what is it? No implicit any's. No implicit any's in your config to disable it. But the acceptable use is um, when migrating a JavaScript application gradually to a TypeScript application. That's the main use case, I think. Other than that, people would say never use any, but I also feel any any is okay while developing as long as it's fixed before pushing up changes. Um, because you could even commit it. I mean, I'm the kind of person where I'll write any's, you know, just to get through while I'm like pumping out functionality, right? And then once it's functionally working, then I add um, types to it, which is kind of silly because I could catch some errors, but I'm generally pretty, I don't run into a lot of um, errors when I'm debugging. If I started running into a lot of errors, I'd probably switch to a different type. Or I'd probably switch to adding a type along the way. Oh shit, I haven't been adding these to the frickin' TypeScript. Where have y'all been? Um, I did that one. 156. TypeScript. Save it. 155. TypeScript. Save it. 154. Uh, TypeScript. Save it. 153. That one had it. Okay. Next. Um, this one was kind of like a three-part question. What is no implicit any or strict null checks or strict do? Um, I'm just gonna combine this into one question for now. So no in a TS config that JSON, you can add no implicit any to throw compile errors if there are any any's. If any types are used. Or no, wait. It's not if they're used, it's if TypeScript assumes it's an any. If TypeScript has to or if TypeScript guesses a type as any. I think it's how you would word it. Strict null checks. Ah, I don't know if I remember exactly what this one does. So script or strict null checks. I think it was around letting like a value would have to be defined and it wouldn't allow null values. Let's see. Um, when strict null checks is false, null and undefined are effectively ignored by the language. This can lead to unexpected errors at runtime. When it's true, null and undefined have their own distinct types and you'll get a type error if you try to use them where a concrete value is expected. So I think it just says you have to, I mean, you end up, you get an error. You have to add the or undefined or or null. So I think this is good to have on there, uh, because you're you're assuming. you're assuming that if you want to have a null or undefined value for a specific thing, then it has to be defined. Otherwise, it's going to ignore it. When it's false, it's what it's saying is like any value that has a type can be null or undefined. And you're on your own to kind of check it. If that's, if that's how it really works. So strict null checks will force the developer, force the code, force the types to allow null or undefined if it can be empty. And the strict, I don't even know what that one does. Strict flag enables a wide range of type checking behavior that results in stronger guarantees from program correctness. Turning this on is equivalent to enabling all of the strict mode family options which are outlined below. I don't know about all of them, but here they are. So strict will enable all of the strict mode config options to force, what did they say? Program correctness. Results in stronger guarantees of program correctness. Enable all of the strict mode config options. I don't like the correctness, but whatever. That's what they say in the docs. You know what I'm saying? Add it to TypeScript. Save. Okay. What is a union in TypeScript? See how that looked when I came up. What is a union in TypeScript? A union is a TypeScript type of possible values. I don't know if it's just for a string. Is it possible values or possible types? Remains the day. Thank you for the gift sub. Oh my, oh my. I don't know why my overlays aren't working. Oh my, oh my. Let me try to replay it. Nah. Oh, the problem was I had to restart my thing. Right? Galax. Lucky subscription for you. This should be a little higher, huh? Yeah.
Hydrate level four, please.
Hydrate level four, please. For possible types? Possible types, yes. Is a TypeScript type of possible types? I mean, I guess that's really all it is. A union is a TypeScript type of possible types. For example, you can do string or null or specific strings. One, two. Is a TypeScript type of possible types that can be mixed? It's good enough for me for now. Correct unions don't hold values. Yeah. So these seem like values, but really are, what they are is a type of a string. But this specific string. So this is a union still. But it's just types. It's mixed types or possible types, multiple possible types, I guess. Okay, next question. What's a TypeScript type assertion? Hmm? Remains a day. I know you're not so great with naming things. Can a union hold a union? Yes, I think it could. For example, I think you could do one or two. So this could be like type items. And then you could do items or string if you wanted to extend it, so. What's a TypeScript type assertion? So a type assertion has the syntax of as some type. It tells TypeScript to treat the preceding code value data preceding data as a specific on how you would describe it? So for example, this would be, it could be an object. It could be other things, though. It could be like 14 as string. But ideally, it would be more something like you would define an object title, whatever, as blog post, you know? You would say this would be as a blog post. There is a gotcha with it, though, that I learned in the book. So they're not always great to use because it forces this into here. There's certain cases where it won't error. So right here, so say blog post has required title and a description or title and a URL, but this doesn't have a URL, this won't throw an error because you're telling TypeScript, treat this as a blog post. If you wanted to have an error, you'd have to say, you'd have to put it before. An assertion is, is like saying like, treat it as this. I don't care what you say. But I can do blog post. And then if I removed it from here, then it would show me a TypeScript error because this value is missing the URL, but it's required. So that was a little good little gotcha that I learned from the book. Effective TypeScript, which is available now on my website. Oh, you also have to do as unknown as my type. I haven't run into that yet, but you have to convert it to an unknown. I did mention that, but I didn't know any cases where I would specifically do that. So a type assertion has a syntax of as blah blah blah. It tells TypeScript to treat the preceding. Is that the right word? Data as a specific type. Next question. In minutes. When would TypeScript be unable to catch a mismatched type? And I think I wrote this question as a part of that explanation that I just said. But the other major one that I would think of is TypeScript might not catch errors with any types. I mean, well, probably won't catch errors with any types. With any types, whether they are implicit or explicit such as data returned from an API without a type declaration. Data returned from API was the main one. You would have to tell, like you can make a fetch request, you know? And TypeScript won't come, I don't think it will complain that like, hey, we don't know what kind of type this is unless you have the no implicit anys. It will implicitly set it as any. And if you have no implicit anys, it's going to, it's going to complain. And that's how you, that's one way to protect yourself against it. The other way is if you don't have that on, your data is going to come back from the API and TypeScript is going to have no idea, you know, what it is. Like even I won't know what it is without looking at it. So that's why you want to make sure you add them there on your API requests. This is a next level question for you. What does TypeScript remove when transpiled? It doesn't understand the word transpiled. How do I add it? Add to dictionary. Duh. Oops. TypeScript. Compiler will remove any type information. There was something else around it too. Some things it will keep, though, remove any type information since it is not valid JavaScript code. It, I think it will keep some kind of enums around. I'm not sure if you do something special. I'd have to double check that, so I'm going to leave it off for now, but I think it could keep around enums. You can use enums as values, right? Like enums become objects. Yeah. So if you have type enum, is it just parentheses or is there an equal? And you have like title. Is it equals? Title. Okay, so it isn't a type enum. Blog post properties. I mean, I don't think you would really make a type for this, but oh, let's do blog post types. That makes more sense. That's what you would really do. So types, let's say like audio, video. And then you can check, you can check it. So you could do like actual JavaScript code where you can say if blog post types dot audio is equal to post dot type. Then do whatever, right? And this will work. It'll compile this down for you. So this will become just the string audio when it actually compiles down. I think, would it actually just be the string audio or would it be create an object for it and then reference it for you? I don't really think it matters, but I just, it will do that. Enums will be converted to should be key value pairs. Remove type. Oh, okay. Yeah, I had type in front, type enum. It shouldn't have been that. It should have just been enum. I don't use enums a ton, but I need to start using them more for sure. I started using them more, but yeah, you can paste it into TS Playground. I hate TS Playground, but yeah, I could. Let's see. TS Playground TypeScript? Come on, man. Come on, man. So we're going to do like that. And post. Let's say this is audio. Dot audio. Oh, no. Yeah, they, so they create a var blog blog post types. They assign it all the values for you and then I just reference, it references it informal in there. Cool, cool. Enums will be converted to objects for JavaScript to use. Can you think of anything else that'll be removed? Any type information. So that includes, you know, interfaces and such like that, but I think enums are the only thing that sticks around. We'll have to update that later if we find out more. 111 questions. Okay, can you overload a function in TypeScript? This is something that I was having a problem with. I was using interfaces and I was trying to overload them in one way. And I think it was not possible for some reason. Or there was a different, a specific way you have to write it for it to happen. This one I'm going to have to come back to. Because I don't remember the answer. Noob. So also in my questions here, I have this little thing up top to say, if you hit this, okay, these are all the questions that don't have answers. So when I do want to come back to edit them later. I don't think you know the answer either, Remains the Day. Don't you try to call me out. You don't know the answer. Google it. You better Google it real quick. Google it. You better Google it real quick. What happens at TypeScript build time and runtime? What does that mean? TypeScript build time? I think I'm preferring to compile time and build time. And build time. Is that the same? I think that might have been another way to rewrite the last questions, like what does TypeScript remove? Build time and runtime. I'm gonna leave this one off for now, cause I don't really know. This is kind of a silly one. Does TypeScript affect the performance of your code? The answer is no if you're using the correct supported TypeScript target version. No. As long as you are using the correct target. What do they call that? TypeScript target. Yes. They just call it target? Yeah, I guess. Using the correct target in your config. Older ECMAScript versions will add polyfills where needed. Which could, which means more code generated. You don't understand polyfills yet? Yes, Remains the Day. Is that, can you tell me why it affects the performance of your code? That's what I thought. You ain't got nothing. This is an interesting one. Will output still be generated? Will TypeScript generate output? If you have type errors? What's the answer to that one? Hydrate break while you answer. I'm not even halfway through the questions I wrote down. But that's okay. So will TypeScript generate output if you have type errors? The answer is yes, right? I think that's what the book said. Type script will always generate output even if it includes errors. I know that they'll check that, but I think that's right. What if we Google it? Do not create JavaScript files and errors. Still produces output when the TS files contains errors. Let's see if they changed it. This is from 2014. No emit on error. So they just added a config option for it probably. Do not emit compiler output files like JavaScript source code, source maps, et cetera, if errors reported. Okay. TypeScript will will always generate output even if it includes errors. Will generate output even if it includes errors unless you have your config set to true. Next question. What does it mean to say TypeScript's type system is gradual and optional? This is something mentioned in the book. I wouldn't normally ask someone like this as an interview question because it's not, it might not be widely described as that. But what does it mean to say type? The TypeScript type system is gradual and optional. So what that means is you can start with as little types. Let the intern answer that one. With as little TypeScript as needed and gradually adopt more type checking and strictness when ready. This includes adjusting config options like strict, oh, no, no implicit anys. Is it no implicit anys or no implicit any? No implicit any. Like no implicit any or strict null checks, et cetera. I think that's it. I think that's it. What kind of food you get Cypher? What'd you get? So we've had a fifteen questions so far. When would you use a never in TypeScript? Bacon burger with fries and chicken strips with onion rings? Oh my gosh. Nice. Yeah, there's a place close to me, like a little sports bar that has really good burgers. Honestly, I prefer them than most of the burger joints out here because they're usually pretty good. But they also do a prime rib French dip that is so bomb. It's expensive, but it's bomb. What it is is you get the prime rib with French dip, right? And then, and then you add provolone on top and then the fries, you can get sweet potato fries. Their sweet potato fries are bomb. So good, so good. Okay. When would you use a never in TypeScript? Never? Mouth watering intensifies. A ne- never can be used to prevent setting a value? Prevent setting a value? Setting or passing a value? Similar to a disallow. I don't know. It's just another word. Okay, the next ones are going like into some harder shit real after this, okay? This isn't even chapter one. I'm not even through chapter one yet. So this was some pretty basic stuff. We're in the basics. So the next question, I'll show you how it ramps up. I'm not sure if anybody's gonna know this, cause I'm not sure if they use this terminology outside of the book, but what is declaration merging and when would you use it? This was actually a cool feature that in TypeScript and when would you use it? So I wrote down a few things for this. I'm not sure if I would remember this off the top of my head, but declaration merging is the ability to, I'll show you right away what I wrote down. Declaration merging is the ability to use multiple interface declarations to augment the properties. An example case is to allow consumers to add properties. So did you know that you can add properties to an interface as a consumer of an application? Let's comment this out. Oh, it still puts it in there. Interesting. I guess someone commented. So let's say, let's do an example of this real quick. Let's say interface post. And I'm gonna say it has a title. So small. I'm gonna say it has a title, which is a string. It's got a author, which is a now, let's just say a title, a URL, which is a string. And let's say we leave it at that. Maybe we have some kind of library or whatever, open source thing where you have a post and people can add additional properties to posts, which you can do. I have to double check this, is you can say interface post re-declare it and add more properties to it if I am right. Let's see. Now we want to add author and that's gonna be a string of something too. And I'm gonna say const post is a post. Is missing the following types. It's missing all of them. See how it's missing title, URL and author? URL. Whatever. Still missing it. So now if I made this like optional with a question mark, it would be okay. But I thought it was cool, cause you can if you know, for some reason, someone has a third party library and they give you some data type that you can extend in some way. You can also extend the interface and it's different than doing like interface post plus extends post. I mean, this would work too. You could do like post plus. And that would work the same way, but the idea is more, I think, that if I wanted to extend the functionality of a third party language and the third party language is gonna, or a third party library is gonna use post everywhere in their code, I can't change their code to say, well, change everything to post plus. But what I can do is I can extend the post and force them to use additional properties, which I haven't found a scenario where you actually want to do that, but I thought that was really interesting, because it was not something that I knew was possible before. Whatever equals type or null. Are you mean like a strict null check kind of thing? Is that what you're talking about? Are we talking about? So I'm gonna take what I wrote already, because I'm not gonna be able to define that better. Is the ability to use multiple interface declarations to augment the properties. Augment always gets me. I always forget what that means. An example case is to allow customers to add or consumers to add properties to an existing interface. Oh, I see. In Laravel, question mark collection can mean a collection or null. Yeah. So this means optional, the question mark on a property name like that means optional. It doesn't mean null. Depending on your config, you know, if you have that strict null checks. It just means that it's not required to be on the object. But if it is on the object, it's gonna check to make sure it's a string. So if I do author one, it's gonna say, hey, I expect it to be a string. But that it's not required within the scope. Oh, I see. So it's also saying it can be null, like you allow a null value. Yeah, I already explained it. So if you did, if you had strict null checks on and you wanted to allow a null value for it, you would get rid of that. And then you would add or null or undefined or or something like that. And then this could be like, let's say if this was null. Then I could make this null and it would be okay. Implicitly, yeah. TypeScript save. Okay, next question. You write mostly PHP Cypher? What are type declaration? TypeScript type declaration files for? A type declaration file is like types dot d dot TS. The d dot TS is just declarations, meaning it only has I think it should only have TypeScript in there. I don't think it can have JavaScript. I'm not sure. You recently started writing view front end and node backend for the, the Gridsum app or CMS or whatever you're, you're building right now? Is that for personal or for for work? We have an app that leverages AWS Lambda using Claudia as middleware to convert our API. Wow. What does that mean? AWS Lambda, I know those. So you got like Lambda functions. Claudia, I'm not sure what that is. A middleware to convert your API. So it's gonna like, you're converting your regular like a REST API to cloud functions API? Is that what you mean? So a type let's Google search it. A typed abstraction file is a TypeScript file with your exported types for others to use. E G N open source project third party lib, et cetera. And also Um, and also. It's also um. The IDE uses it to. Um, read from types to read type information. So that's like in VS Code, you know, it'll say like, if you try to use a low dash method, it's gonna tell you all the. Available arguments and the types that they have and stuff. But I wanted to see. All the standardized built-in APIs available. Oh. I know includes all the standardized. Let's just read it. Um, Claudia converts your node API to a cloud API native US. Okay. So it kind of takes all your different endpoints and then creates the cloud functions for them, the Lambda functions. For them. So if someone hits your Lambda function, does your Lambda function then hit your API? In real time? I would imagine. Um, what do type declarations look like? Dot ts files. Two main kinds of files. TS are the implementation files that contain types and executable code. These are the files that produce JS outputs and are normally where you write your code. D dot ts files are declaration files that contain only type information. These files don't produce JS outputs. They are only used for type checking. That's what I thought. That's what I assumed. So let me add that to my TypeScript file. With your exported types. For others to use, EG blah blah blah. Also, the ID uses it. To read type information. Um, type declaration. Files do not. Produce JS files. But TS files do. Um, and this is dot d dot ts. Do not produce. Okay. Okay. I'm gonna try to make it through chapter one. You've only been streaming an hour and a half. Maybe we can do it within two hours. Okay, what are the different ways you can use access property? Checking. TypeScript. Um. You can, let's say. What are the different ways you can? Check for. Access. Properties in TypeScript. So I'm gonna try not to look at my answer real quick. Um, I mean. The first one is giving your data a type. Like with an object? There's two. Ah. Different ways you can check for access. Um. Your variables a specific. Type which forces. The properties. Or you can define. An object literal. And TypeScript. Will create a type for you. A defined. Find type which enforces. Specific properties. Um. When it forces specific properties and throws errors if additional properties. Are used. Also, you can define an object literal and TypeScript will create a type for you. So what I mean by that um, is we could have like our interface here. We already did that, right? So if we try to add a new property to it, like a date. It's gonna have this little checking error that says. Um, this whole type. With the date is not assigned. Um, sometimes it's better to read like the second or third error they give you, like object literal may only specify known properties and date does not exist on the type post. But if we remove this. It's gonna create a type for us automatically based on all the properties because it knows all the properties we've defined right there. It's gonna try to guess certain. Um, types like, for example, if this was undefined. And that doesn't work. I guess if it's an array is when it throws. I don't know if it throws an error, but it. Ah, never. Interesting. Because that array, there's no values in it. It never allows you to put anything in the value. But you could define that as a specific type to to enforce it. But let's say we have that and then now, so if we try to do post dot. Fubar equals whatever, it's gonna throw an error and say, hey. This specific type that we created for you does not allow additional properties. That's the where I'm trying to get at from the other angle. Um, declaring after definition will ignore extra props. What did I mean by that? Declared on a variable would disallow other problems. Declaring after definition will ignore extra props. So. Ah, I think this could have been more around. If I did something like. Let's say I drop all these and I do um. Post instead of cons, this will be a let. And then I set it there. No, it still throws an error. Maybe because I'm setting it all at once. So if I did like in this case. Post equals. Missing the following types. Yeah, so this is missing all of them. What does that mean? I'm not sure what that meant. I might have to double check it. There was a specific way. Cat's out. There was a specific way to kind of get around it. On accident or on purpose. I don't know. It's up to you, but. Also, you can define an object that I'm typing, create a type for you. There is so. I'll shove her in a minute. And I think I already added. Well, let's show her. Is she hungry? I think she might be hungry. Hold on, let's feed the cat. Everybody, hold your damn horses. We're gonna feed the cat. Check out this. Automatically pauses the task. Ellie Vader, no relation to Darth Vader. What is the command declared? Is it back? Yes, it is. And it clears it and starts it again. Look at that. Look at that. Okay. Uh, next question, please. Next question. Um, I think I already have this one. What are the differences? What's the difference between? Interfaces and types in TypeScript? Did I answer this? None selected. No, I didn't. Okay. So we could answer it now. Um. Change my answer. All right, Cypher. Thanks for hanging out. Good to see you again. Haven't seen you in forever. Oh, why thank you. Why thank you. Trying to get, gotta get back into a schedule again, you know, streaming again. I think it could. Could probably do it. I have a lot of things I'd like to work on. I know that. Okay, so the difference between types and interface. So let me try to remember off the top of my head. Um, they are mostly the same. But a. Type can hold. Or a type. Is it a type can be a union? Oh, a type can. Be a part of a union? Or extend unions? Okay. I look, I did, I did cheat. Um, but a type can. Extend complex unions. I don't remember exactly what that meant, but it can do it. Um. Can extend. Complex unions and an. Unions while an. Interface can't. And interfaces can be augmented. Wow, types can't. This was something I asked myself a long time ago when I couldn't, uh, I didn't, when I was first learning it, I didn't know. What the difference was. I was like, why would I use one over the other? So this was answered in the book, which is nice. New question. What is the purpose of generics in TypeScript? A generic. Um, how did I define this? I'm trying not to look again. Um. So it was like a generic can be used as a placeholder for arguments. As well as like allow you to build your own. Custom types, I think. Okay. Um, a generic can be used as a placeholder for a type. To be passed in. Um. Like arguments for a function. And you'll see these get used. Um. There's actually a lot built in. So there's like omit and you can say post. And then you can say author like that. That is a. But it's being used as a value here. So you can say like type. Semi-post. It will take this post. This is the generic. The generic is in here. Um. This is what I'm passing through and then I'm saying remove the author from it. So omit will. You can see here that writing what they're fucking writing there. That's ridiculous, right? That's what the generic is. I mean, right? Um, it can be used as a placeholder for a type to be passed in like arguments for a function. Which allow you to generate. Uh, fancier types? I don't want to use the word fancier. Custom. Types. Hey, hey, get down. Uh, what else did I say? You can say T extends some type to make it match a type when being used. So this is what I wrote. And what I mean by that is T extends some type. This will create a new generic type with the same properties. But it won't actually. Use the existing type. So maybe if you just wanted to. Um, maybe you could use a union with it. So maybe you could say something like. It could be T extends some type. And. T extends some other type. So you can compose mul- multiple types into one. I don't know if that works or not. I'm guessing. But I'll leave it at that for now. Okay. How do you use key of? Key of type of indexing? How do you use key of type of indexing and map types in TypeScript? So, um, key of will create a new type with all the keys from the given type. A new type, a new union type is what it is, I believe, right? Union type. So for example, let's delete some crap here. And I can say type, um, keys equals key of post. And that don't help. Um. Const. Foo is not assignable to type key of post. It should be able to use this, this, or this. So maybe I can say author. There you go. So what it actually does, I don't know why it doesn't show it, but what it's really creating is a union type of title or URL or author in this case. I've used this, um, this was something new that I learned in the book. I mean, I kinda knew about it, but I learned how to use it properly, the right way. Um, when I'm trying to say like, it has to match one of these properties, right? So if I, if I say, um, I'm adding a property, it's gotta match one of these values, otherwise it's invalid. And that's kinda nice to have. I've used that a couple of times in my code. Um, we'll create a new union type with all the keys from the given type. Type of will. This type of will. Close this one. Um, type. Type of post. But it's being used as a value. Oh, okay. So type of is like a way to get things off of a value. Is that right? So let's create that and then let's say type of hey. What does that look like? It creates a type from a value. Type of will create a type from a value. Is that right? I mean. So what I wrote was key of only works on types and is to get names of keys as a union. Type of is to use on a JavaScript object, but acts like key of. Type of is to use on a JavaScript object, but acts. It doesn't give you just the keys, though. It gave us the full type, right? One is string. Maybe I would write it more like that. So it's, we'll create a type from a JavaScript value. We'll create can will create a new union type with all the keys from the given type. Can only be used on types and will create a new union type with all the keys from the given type. Type of will create a type from a JavaScript value. Indexing? I don't remember what indexing was and I don't remember what map types. Well, map types were, um. Fuck, I don't remember what map types were either. Uh, I kinda do. Oh, I looked at my notes and I, I remember them now. Um. Let me remove, uh, some of this. So we'll take out that. So it's just those two. It's more of a real comparison. The other one will be kind of like different. Um, how do you use key of and type of in TypeScript? Key of can only, can only be used on types and will create a new union type with all the keys from the given type. Type of will create a type from Java, from a JavaScript value. Okay. And then the next one will be. How do you use? Indexing? I might need to change this later, but, cause I'll just save that. Cause I don't know. I mean, I know how to use a map type. It comes up in this other question in a second, but we'll get there. Um, okay. What are some of the built-in reusable generics in TypeScript? Uh, we have pick. I mean, to poll specific properties to, or to, to create a new type with properties from a specific type. Oh, it's specific properties from a type. Um. Omit, which does the opposite of pick. Leaving only non-omitted properties on the new type. Um. And I'm not doing these right. These are, actually should be pick. Omit. Pick, um, record, which will create a new type for a key value pair. Um, what was the other ones? There's a read only, which does not let any of the properties be mutated. I think it listed five or six in my notes. Here's four. Let's see. Pick omit, uh, read only, and record. And there's partial and return type. To allow a type to only have some properties of a given type. Return type? I don't know what that does. Uh, forces the return type to be something? Return type. Also, return type. How's that formatted for you? Cool, cool, cool. TypeScript save. Um. What is the read-only modifier used for in TypeScript? So like I mentioned, the other one. How do I use? Let's see. Well, how do I use it? Um. A property cannot be mutated. The modifier is different than, um, the, what do we call those things? The built-in reusable generics? Cause you can do it on a specific property. I don't exactly remember how to do it. So let's see. I think it's read only on array and tuple literal types, really? I didn't know that. Okay. Let's see. This one. What the fuck is this? Is this not the real sign? Oh, read only. Oh, you put it in front of something like that. To mark a class property as immutable? Well, maybe I'm not right. We'll save that one for some later. Laterness, am I right? Two more. What are map types in Java? Not JavaScript, TypeScript. So this is cheating, but, um, the map type allows you to dynamically. I'm not sure if this is right. Allows you to dynamically set key values based on. Um, not key values. Dynamically set key names based on a type, I think is what it is. To allow authors to keep their types dry. However, because they blah, 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 they are difficult to understand at first. So it's, it's basically this right here, right? I can say a key. The keys have to be strings and the values have to be this. Boolean or horse. Um, a map type is a generic which uses a union of property keys, frequently called the key of, to iterate through keys. Okay, so it's not just this. Map types build on the syntax for index signatures. This is the index signature. That's what I couldn't. Indexing or whatever, I think that's what they were referring to before. Which are used to declare the types of the properties which have not been declared ahead of time. And a map type. So you say key of to basically create them all. What that does is, um. Options flags. Oh, I need to. So this would be post. And what this is going to do, it's going to say everything in the post. It's missing the following properties from type, blah, blah, blah. It seems a stupid roundabout way to do it here, but, um, it lets you build a type with a specific set of values. So maybe like, I can't remember what I use it for, but I used it in my code recently. I'm gonna leave these out. I'm getting too tired for this stuff, so we'll keep this out for now. It is almost 11:00 PM my time. And then the last one, which is related to this, um, is what does this do? TypeScript. K in key of blog post. Um, in this case, what it is is it is a mapped type which creates a new type forcing the keys of blog post to be present, to be required with a value with a Boolean value. This could be used to. I'll just leave it at that. But basically, um, I could do something like this to say. Let me delete this other one, cause it doesn't really make sense. Um, type blog post. Prop access. So say I'm gonna make a new, this is actually post. It's gonna rewrite all of the types on here. So I could say title, URL, author. I'm gonna have all the same properties here as this post. But they're gonna force them to have Boolean values. And that could be like if they wanted to do const access props is blog pissed prop access equals. And then I would have title true, URL true, and then author false. And I can make an object like that and I could use this object. This type would enforce it here, but I could use this object to say like, okay, go through each of the properties. okay, go through each of the properties and if it's true, allow them to see it. If it's false, don't allow them to see it. But I'm using this. So if I ever add a new prop up here, like say I add a new one to instead of author, I add date and that's going to be a date. Now this will throw a TypeScript compiler error and say, hey, you're missing the date. And I use that for a case where I wanted to have some kind of configuration here, but whenever I add a new property, I need to make sure that I update this code. Otherwise, I could have a bug. So now I have to define date with a value on there. So it's a good forced check. Save it. Call it a day. All right. That was just stuff from chapter one. And chapter one only goes through. Hold on, hold on. And that's not everything. There might have been things in there that I didn't get. Item one through five. Chapter two is on TypeScript's type system. Chapter one is getting to know TypeScript. So this was really just getting to know TypeScript. And I think we're a little bit above basic TypeScript stuff, right? So the things that I learned in this specific chapter, task add, review, task next. All right, let's go on to the review, shall we? Things I learned in this chapter. So all of the questions, these are not all of the questions. I need to refresh. There we go. Those are all the questions. Okay, so I mean, there was three questions in here before. So this is all the things I learned from that one chapter. Besides the basic types like key of and type of, those were new to me. I've never really used those before. Some of the config options, I didn't understand those. The map types, those are new, which were really handy. Union. I wouldn't have been able to define a union type before, but I had to use them, you know? Read only, I didn't really use storing configurations, different ways you can store some of the different options, type assertions. So there's a lot of stuff in here that kind of solidified my TypeScript to the next level. I'm still, what I would say is a beginner. But I think as this book goes on, we're going to get tougher and tougher things, fancier and fancier things. But thank you for hanging out with me and learning some TypeScript. I would like to do some more. I will, as I read more of this book, I will do more of this. I'd like to review other books. If you have any books you'd like me to review, you can let me know. I won't guarantee to get it, but let me know. I just put a link to my wishlist. Let's see what's on my wishlist. These are books that I would like to do this for. Most of them are around software architecture and data and some interfaces. I do like interface design. I'd like to learn more design patterns. Event-driven microservices, domain-driven design, web app security, machine learning design patterns. So these are just the kind of things that I'm interested in. I'm planning to write some more assessments on my own of just generic things like arrays, objects, functions in JavaScript, regular JavaScript stuff. I don't really need a book for those kinds of things because I've already, I'm just going to kind of come up with them on my own. But if you want to, you know, you can buy me one of these books and I can review them on stream for you. Or if there's other ones, let me know what you think. If you do want to buy this book, so far I like it. I would recommend it. You can get to it from my site. I get an Amazon affiliate thing, so I sign up for affiliates. I'm going to use affiliate for one of these for my warehouse deals project later on. Which is the goal later on. I only did this as a bonus thing, whatever, like this is kind of an extra thing. But I want to start building out more assessments on my site. There's a lot of things I want to do on my site content-wise that I want to add that I want to do on stream as well. I want to build out some guides for just kind of like navigating your career in web development, information, you know, stuff. I've been a developer for 15 years now. I've seen a lot of different stuff, you know? I don't know all the answers. There's plenty of people who don't know. I mean, who have information. I would encourage you to get information from different people for different scenarios, you know? I don't care about Fang stuff. There's people who will prep you for Fang jobs and those kinds of things. Personally, I'm not interested in those kinds of things. I like to learn things. I like to test my knowledge. I like to make sure I know something, feel like I know it through and through. There's always a lot to know, but yes, I plan to keep building this stuff out. Otherwise, thank you for tuning in. What happens when I do end? Oh, there it is. Remains the day you are what? You are what? I do end and it gives all my shoutouts. There's my Discord, my YouTube, where I put all my recordings, my GitHub, if there's some code from somewhere that you want to see, and Twitters. To come chat with me on the Twitters. I am on the Twitters as well. This is my first stream back in a month. It's fun to have y'all in there with me. Let's see if we can find someone to raid. In the meantime, be just chill, you know? Chill, have a good time. You just hang out, wait, just, just be cool, man. Just be cool, you know? How do I find? Oh, Odette is streaming. I haven't seen Odette in forever. We're going to raid Odette. What's he doing? What's he doing? Pub sub overlay animations with GSAP? Ooh, he has got so many cool setups on his stream. Or so many cool like overlays and games and all that junk on streams. There he is, you hear him? Oh, someone else just raided him too. Double raid. All right, we'll catch you next time. I'm going to try to do once a week. The raid has been created.
I need to be watching myself. I do that enough in the mirror when I'm brushing my hair. How did your stream go, sir? We've actually solved the terrible mystery of why our stuff was horribly borked. Are you ready for this? I have two words for you that explains why everything was absolute garbage. Ready?